Good evening.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to call the February the fifteenth, 2016, meeting of the Cumberland County Commissioners to order. At this time, I will turn it over to Commissioner Charles Evans for our invocation and our pleasure of leading, please.
Good evening. Before we go into the invocation, I would like to introduce to you a young lady that's here tonight, Isabella Brown, who is a first grader, and she is here with her parents, Hope and Gerald Page, and her brother Kizan Kezenhall, who was the only youth from Cumberland County's 4-H to attend the 4-H Citizenship North Carolina Focus and Legislative Breakfast that was held in Raleigh. Isabella loves to sing, dance, and be a social butterfly. She enjoys playing soccer and basketball for Hope Mills Parks and Recreation Center. When she grows up, she would like to be a Cumberland County Commissioner. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. She would like to be a policewoman. And with that, would you stand and join me in the invocation?
Dear Lord, our heavenly Father, first of all, I would like to say thank you. Thank you for giving us this day, Lord. Thank you for giving us our life, health, and strength. And, Lord, I ask that you please allow and help this governing body do what it needs to do for the citizens of this great county of Cumberland. With these and other blessings, I ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Isabella. Great job. We appreciate you being here. Thank y'all for bringing her and come back and see us, everyone of you, please. At this time, we have a recognition for an outgoing member of one of our boards. We always like to salute our people who serve thanklessly and tirelessly for the work that they do, and this is the best chance we get to thank them, so I'm turning it over now to Commissioner Lancaster.
Sister. This is a certificate of appreciation presented to Thaddeus. Had the pleasure of working with him for a couple of years out at the Crown Civic Center, and we'd like to present this to him for outstanding dedication and service on the Civic Center Commission from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners dated this day, the fifteenth day of February, and it's signed by Marshal Fairclough, our chairman. And Thaddeus, it was a pleasure to work with you, a first-class young man, did a great job, and thank you for your service to this community. The mic is yours. After you smile.
I'd like to thank everyone, especially for the recognition by the County Commissioners. It means a lot when you serve and able to serve and able to be recognized for it at the same time. I'd also like to thank everyone who is a part of a board and is serving our community in our community in every capacity possible. So make sure if you're not on the board, please serve on a board or some type of service to this community.
This time, Ms. Cannon.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I have something that's not on the agenda, if I may, this evening. I have the honor of introducing Ms. Jordan Burston. She is a senior at Jack Britt High School, but she's also the president of the Fayetteville Cumberland County Youth Council. She is a native of Cumberland County, and she is interested in pursuing a degree in biology and to move on to medicine. She has applied to Chapel Hill and is awaiting a response. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I believe that Jordan would like to say a few things, if you wouldn't mind.
Jordan, would you come to the mic, please?
She's also joined here by her teacher from Jack Britt as well.
Hi, my name is Jordan Burston, and for the past two years, I've had the pleasure of being not only a member but a leader with the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. It's been an honor to get to know more about our local government and be in the position to serve our community. We have the opportunity to host service projects, represent our county on the state and national level, and give back to our community. One of the upcoming events we're having is a youth summit at the Kiwanis Rec. It is a discussion about diversity in local government, and we would like to, on behalf of the Youth Council, to extend an invitation to all of you here to come and speak with us, youth, about your journey in local government and how you can encourage young people to get into local government. So I would love to extend that invitation to you all, if I could.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll proceed to our...
Mr. Chairman, if I could have just one moment, if you don't mind, because one of the things, I think Ms. Glover's here, who is the head of the Fayetteville Cumberland County Youth Council, and she and I have had discussions. A lot of times, when they do the youth council, they talk about Fayetteville, so it's Fayetteville Cumberland County Youth Council. So Ms. Glover and I have had discussions about each month, in the afternoon and the evening meeting, that a member of the youth council come and be a party to our meeting so that they would be here. I think all of you are on the school board, y'all remember you used to bring the student body presidents, and so that's where I got the idea from. I'm not that innovative, but I thought that this, and she came tonight because of that, so hopefully, we could make a spot for a youth council member, knowing that they will come each month and be a part of this, because they are a part of, Cumberland County's part of the youth council, and we don't want the city to think they get all the accolades on this. Thank you so very much for coming. Thank you, Ms. Glover, for the conversation that we had, and we'll make sure that we can get this going. Thank you.
At this time, we begin our public comment period, which typically runs from 6:45 to 7 o'clock, but we've taken up most of your time, but actually, we're going to allow 15 minutes, no matter what. So Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
We do. We have five speakers.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask our county manager to read our rules for public comment.
Yes, sir. The public comment period shall be held at 6:45 and shall last no longer than 15 minutes. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make remarks within the 15-minute time period. No time may be yielded to another speaker. Speakers will address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by stating their name and address.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call for a speaker.
Our first speaker is Mr. Kerry Rogers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Pastor Kerry Rogers. I'm at 11775 NC 109 South, Peachland, North Carolina. I'm actually here to represent, or I'm actually a part of, the Cumberland County Caring Voices. And the reason why I'm here is that we received notice that Duke Dominion is actually going to be here to present to you about the Atlantic Coast Pipeline. And so I believe it's our duty, especially as citizens of the community, is to give our point of view about this particular pipeline. So you'll be hearing from others. You know, they actually, back in a couple of years ago, the ACP hired a private company to actually do some, do an economic impact statements, or economic impact how the ACP affect the economy here locally and other communities up and down the pipeline. The reality is, we need to know the truth, and you need, and I'm just asking the commissioners to look into the economic impacts and look at the numbers, because what they're finding, what other independent companies are finding, when they actually audit and look at these economic impacts, they're finding that there's not auditable. Where are they getting the numbers from? They're saying how many jobs it's going to bring into the community, and there is no numbers you can actually audit, and the reality is, where, how are they coming up with how many jobs they're going to bring in the community and things like that? There's no evidence. There's no evidence of job creation, no evidence of real tax revenue increase based on the inaudible, or you can't, numbers they're bringing up, I call them the Disney World numbers. Also, the report ignores the real cost of public safety, human health, welfare. It dismisses the real cost of replacing natural resources, habitat, wildlife, aged forest, trees, trees will be lost. Also, one major thing to look at is it's saying that it'd bring industry into town. Do you know how much it costs to actually, this pipeline is about 36 inches, highly pressurized with methane gas, how much does it cost for an industry to actually tap into that pipeline? Do you know the cost? It's between $1 million and $5 million, and that's what we need to check out. So the only thing we're asking the commissioner to do is, you need to check out the numbers. As they continue to bring them up before you, you need to ask them, where are you getting the numbers from? And we're also asking, as a group, for us to get on the agenda. I believe it's very important to hear the other side, so we have a group of people, landowners, who want to voice their concerns about what's happening with the Atlantic Coast Pipeline. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Rodney Simmons.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Simmons, pull that mic down for you. There you go.
Good afternoon. My name is Rodney Simmons, and I am a landowner. My address is 4419 Huckerberry Road, Fayetteville, 28312. And I'm coming as a concerned citizen, because the Atlantic Coast Pipeline is supposed to be coming directly through my property. As a concerned Cumberland County taxpayer for over 45 years, citizen, retired combat disabled war veteran of Vietnam, landowner, I'm here tonight to beg, no plea with Cumberland County Commissioners to not allow this pipeline to come through on my property. This type of pipeline would decrease my land value. It would decrease my land value, increase my taxes. It's hazardous, it's dangerous, it's not safe, it's going to affect my breathing, it's going to affect my heart health, my, this type of pipeline will also, I know the effects have devastation and complications that this type of pipeline have on our citizens, on our schools, on our community, on our churches, on our environment, on our local economy, on the civic organizations within and the surrounding cities. And I think it's going to affect everybody in this county, not only this county, but the surrounding counties and surrounding cities. I know the permanent damage this gas pipeline can do to our health, our well-being, our children, our grandchildren. As a retired North Carolina State employee with the North Carolina Employment Security Commission, I know that those sets of skills, which just were required, it's going to bring in a whole lot of contractors and subcontractors, which I know we don't have those sets of type skills in this area. This is not going to bring more jobs to our state, but it's going to bring more devastation to our community. Again, this, between my wife and I, and the concerned citizens of North Carolina and this county, I plead with the commissioners to not approve this Atlantic Coast Pipeline and Dominion Transmission, and any other type of company coming in to bring this type of pipeline that's going to destroy our community, going to destroy our neighbors, going to destroy our property, that's going to destroy our land, because it is a devastation. It's called methane gas, and that's what it's going to bring to this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Naomi Simmons.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners. My name is Naomi Simmons. My address is 4419 Huckerberry Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina, with the zip code 28312. My concern tonight is Atlantic Coast Pipeline coming through on our property. My husband was given a VA Wounded Warriors grant of $50,000 toward a home, and the remaining of $400,000, we took out with the VA, as a VA loan. And during 2013, we signed a contract with a PAMI building construction to build the house. After the grant and the VA loan was approved, the construction began, and on March of 2015, we closed on the house at that time. When the house was already being built, that's when we learned about the Atlantic Coast Pipeline coming through on our property in the back, and it was too late for us to get out of the contract at that time, because everything had already began. I'm pleading to the County Commission not to approve the ACP, because it will cause more harm than good to this community, as well as to us personally. The Atlantic Coast Pipeline is going into the areas where we have more underprivileged minorities that are not educated and abreast upon what damages this pipeline can do to our health and to the environment. And when I speak for the minorities, I speak as one of my, for myself, that I'm not that well-educated upon what this pipeline will do according to everything that will go on, okay? So my husband and I both already have health issues with breathing and other medical issues. The damage is knowing that this pipeline could cause other health issues and our air pollution, not to mention radioactive gas releases and potential fire explosions that this company is not equipped to handle such, this county is not equipped to handle such fires if they would occur. ACP coming on our property could lead us, leave us with damages to properties, decreasing the value of our property from $400,000 to less than nothing, paying taxes on a portion of the land we can't use, and also being responsible for damages that the ACP could cause and leave us with the bill to pay, because we can't afford to fight them personally, because we don't have that kind of money that these large companies have. So tonight, I plead to the County Commission to consider what is at stake for the landowners, the concerned citizens, the taxpayers, and the voters of this county, and for North Carolina. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Ms. Jacqueline Martinez.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Martinez. I'm here with my husband. Our address is 8322 Godwin Falcon Road in Godwin, the zip code is 28344. We've lived there approximately 11 years, and we're in the proposed route for the Atlantic Coast Pipeline, and we're here to voice our concerns and show our opposition against having the pipeline. They sent us a paper saying that they wanted to go through all three pieces of our property, which each piece has substantial structures on it. One is our driveway, one is our large garage, and the other one is our home residence. I also belong to the Cumberland County Caring Voices Group with Pastor Kerry. We have a private septic tank and well that we're worried about concerns, the health of my family. My mother has to reside there most of the time. She has a lot of health problems. She has seizures. I have heart conditions myself. We're concerned about the environment. We have a lot of animals that live around our home. I actually have hawks that land on my clotheslines, and we don't want the nature and the natural habitats of our home destroyed. You're always seeing animals up and down our highways that are getting hit by cars because the trees are being cut down. They don't have no homes for their protections. The schools are in danger. If the pipeline goes close to the schools, the kids have no way of escaping from the blast zone. Not too long after I heard about the gas pipeline, I heard about a pipeline and similar in Creedmore Road, somewhere here in North Carolina, that exploded. So they can't say it's exactly safe, because they don't know exactly what's going to happen from day to day. The noise in the construction is going to be disrupting our property values are going to go down, nobody's going to want to buy our homes. Our neighbor's already put her place up for sale. We are losing part of our land. They say, well, you can still use it, but there's going to be restrictions. They're telling you what you can do on something that you worked hard for. You're still paying the taxes. You're still liable if somebody gets hurt on that piece of land. Your insurance company and your mortgage companies are going to give you problems, especially if you still own the land. I also would like to be put on the agenda, like Pastor Kerry said. I don't believe that we really need another pipeline. There's one in Falcon, North Carolina already, and I have sent in two separate protest petitions to FERC, one for just my, up and down my road alone in my community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Our last speaker is Mr. Tim Evans.
Good evening, County Commissioners. My name is Tim Evans. I reside at 2256 Cypress Slakes Road, and I think this is the first time I've ever spoke at the forum, and I'm not begging for a zoning. What I would like to talk to the commissioners about tonight is pretty much a hot topic right now in our county and city, the parks, Cumberland County Parks and Rec. And now, I know we have joined with the city and the counties together. As I said, I live in Gray's Creek since '86. We do not have a park. We have Hall Park that's owned by the Ruatan Club. Some concerned citizens in '93, we helped raise $50,000 to revamp that park, but the truth of the matter is, most parents in Gray's Creek would rather send their kids to Hope Mills to play in their facilities, because they have better facilities. Here's my argument tonight. I am a broker, and what I do mainly is develop land in Gray's Creek. Lots going on in Gray's Creek, it's one of the hottest parts of the county now. We pay a fee for every lot that we take down to the county. I have asked several people in the county to enlighten me on this Parks and Rec fee for every lot we pay in Gray's Creek. My question is, where is this money going? We would like a park in Gray's Creek as we continue to grow, and can I be guaranteed that this money is earmarked for Gray's Creek, because that's where it's coming from? I will give you a forensics. I took eight lots last week and recorded them at the sum of $1,400. Now, guys, you know, I live in Gray's Creek. We were promised a park when they built the high school. I won't go into how we were short-changed when we got a new high school there pertaining to the one that was built prior, before Gray's Creek High School, but that was the talk, that we were getting a park. When is this going to happen? And if the county and city cannot get along now with our parks, is it time that we pull back away from the city and start taking care of our own citizens? Because I think the favoritism with our parks lies heavy within the city and not the county, but I think it's a crying shame as a community the size of Gray's Creek that's growing, that there's no immediate plans for a park in Gray's Creek. But my question to you guys is this, and maybe somebody can give me an answer in the near future. Where is this money going to, and what is it being used for? Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
There are no further speakers.
Okay, no further speakers. Just have a quick question for our county manager and possibly our county attorney. Is there any decision that's coming to this board regarding that pipeline? If so, when would we expect to get that?
It's not a local issue.
Okay. Not a local issue.
That's correct.
So there'll be, there'll be nothing before this board to decide? Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments at this point? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not that well abreast about this pipeline myself, and I don't know how many of us are. But apparently, there is some concern in that community about it coming this way and interrupting their livelihood. So if we do not have any action to take on this, is there anything that we could do to assist them if this, in fact, is happening?
That's a good question. Rather than put our staff on the spot at this point, why don't we just, why don't we ask our staff to be thoughtful about that, and, you know, what, and see if there's any way we can assist them? I really don't know. I understand the principle of eminent domain, and it's coming at a level, you know, pretty far above us, and so I don't know where that decision's going to lie, but whatever we can do for our citizens, certainly we want to do that, so.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We'll be happy to do that. We were just approached by Dominion Power about providing the board an update on the progress of the project this evening.
Okay, which we'll hear in just a moment.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, I didn't mean to put the staff on the spot like that. I just thought I would ask the question.
That's okay. They're good. They're good. They can do it. But at any rate, I just, I just want to point out that I didn't, I knew what the answer was before I asked the question, but I wanted to point out to the audience that we really are not going to have any authority as far as telling the pipeline where it can and cannot go. We don't have that authority. But at this time, Ms. Cannon, what do we have?
Yes, sir. Item number one, this evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we have a presentation from the Cumberland County, Cumberland Community Foundation by Mr. Jim Coniker and Ms. Eva Williams, on the impact that the community foundation has had on our community. I would like to also say that we're joined by the Director, Mary Holmes, and many other board members of the community foundation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of County Commissioners, Madam County Manager.
I'm Jim Coniker, retired plant manager of Kelly Springfield, and also President of the Cumberland Community Foundation's Board of Directors. Over the last 35, I'm sorry, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present information to you this evening about the Cumberland Community Foundation, which was established by Dr. Lucille Houtaff in 1980 with a gift of $576,000. Over the last 35 years, our assets have grown to almost 70 million through gift
We were just approached by Dominion Power about providing the board an update on the progress of the project this evening.
Okay, which we'll hear in just a moment.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, I didn't mean to put the staff on, on the spot like that. I just thought I would ask the question.
That's okay. They're good. They're good. They can do it. But at any rate, I just, I just want to point out that, that I didn't, I knew what the answer was before I asked the question. But, but I wanted to point out to the, to the audience that we really are not going to have any authority as far as telling the pipeline where it can, cannot go. We don't have that authority. But at this time, Ms. Cannon, what do we have?
Yes, sir. Item number one, this evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we have a presentation from the Cumberland County, Cumberland Community Foundation by Mr. Jim Coniker and Ms. Eva Williams on the impact that the community foundation has had on our community. I would like to also say that we're joined by the Director, Mary Holmes, and many other board members of the community foundation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of County Commissioners, Madam County Manager. I'm Jim Coniker, retired plant manager of Kelly Springfield, and also President of the Cumberland Community Foundation's Board of Directors. Over the last thirty-five, I'm sorry. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present information to you this evening about the Cumberland Community Foundation, which was established by Dr. Lucille Houtaff in nineteen eighty with a gift of five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Over the last thirty-five years, our assets have grown to almost seventy million through gifts from individuals who want to make life better for their fellow citizens. Since our founding, we have made almost forty-five dollars in grants. This year, we are celebrating our thirty-fifth year of operations with three goals: to celebrate, to connect, and to focus on the future. To support the goal of connecting, we wanted to do something to establish relationships to include broader geographical areas of Cumberland County in our work. We were pleased to announce the Giving Together Community Challenge on February third. This challenge is to people living in Linden, Eastover, Godwin, Falcon, Wade, Stedman, Hope Mills, Spring Lake, and Fayetteville. Each community will receive a matching grant of up to ten thousand dollars for a charitable project that they choose. This will help us connect all communities to our mission, giving together to enhance the quality and spirit of community life. The community, community foundations are able to grant in all areas of community life, and thanks to the vision of our early board members, CCF, has a good amount of unrestricted endowments. We have organized our impact into several, seven areas, and this two thousand and fifteen impact document provides specific examples of our grant making. Tonight, Board Member Eva Williams and I will share a little bit about each of these areas. Eva?
Thank you, Jim. Good evening to all of you. I am Eva Williams. I am a retired educator of thirty-five years with Cumberland County Schools. I have served on the foundation board since two thousand and eleven. I am going to give you a brief overview of our seven areas of grant making. The first area is improving the quality of life for all. The foundation started awarding grants back in nineteen eighty-two. It provided the funds to purchase the site for the main library downtown. It also provided startup funding for the Cumberland County Medication Assistance Program, the Cape Fear Botanical Garden, and the Fayetteville Symphony's Youth Orchestra. Recently, we announced the first major award to the North Carolina Civil War History Center. Our second area of, of increasing college access and affordability is realized through our scholarship endowment program, which began in nineteen ninety. Since then, the foundation has awarded two point eight million dollars in scholarships to local students. Last year, we awarded seven hundred thousand dollars in scholarships. Five hundred thousand of that money went to our local colleges, FTCC, Fayetteville State, and Methodist. A third area, growing local giving. The community foundation has worked to raise money for many different issues. In two thousand and fifteen, we received seventeen hundred gifts ranging from five dollars to five hundred thousand dollars. We managed the fundraising effort to build a new facility at the Sand Hill State Veterans Cemetery in Spring Lake. And we ran a campaign that brought almost one point five million meals to our food bank. We also sent one thousand children to summer camps. Fourth, the foundation began building philanthropy and by and for women and families in two thousand and seven, when the Women's Giving Circle of Cumberland County was initiated. Through their yearly given, members have granted over three hundred thousand dollars to benefit women and children in our community. Improving education outcomes is another grant area of grant making. We have been supporting communities and schools for several years. Our fast-forward reading intervention grant given to District Seven Elementary School in Wade helped them win the North Carolina National Title One School of Distinction Award. Growing sustainable support for local nonprofit organizations and strengthening local nonprofit organizations are also two areas of our grant making. We provide support to local nonprofit organizations through training programs and technical expertise. We are teaching local nonprofits to fish for support and build their organizations to improve our community. Our grant-making process highlights our mission of the foundation, giving together to enhance the quality and spirit of community life.
Thank you, Eva. And in addition to the nonprofit support that, that Eva mentioned, we are now partnering, partnering with nonprofits to help them establish and grow their endowments in order for them to help reach a higher level of long-term sustainability. Tonight, we are here to say that the Cumberland Community Foundation is your community foundation, and we are helping generous people give to the causes they wish to support for good forever through their endowments. It's our thirty-fifth year of operation, and we encourage and invite all of you to come to a one-hour thirty-five and thirty-fifth anniversary update. You can call the foundation to sign up or visit our website, CumberlandCF.org, to learn more. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Jim, before you go, can you introduce the folks that you brought with you?
Sure. We'll come back here and point. This is, this is Sula Bustares, Kathy Blackwell, and Mary Holmes. And Bob, Bob Williams came with us in for the moral support.
Welcome to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank y'all very much. Thank you.
Marshall, they, they deserve a round of applause for what they have done in the community and what they will do.
We salute all of you, and we do appreciate what you do in our community. Before we go to our next topic, I've got a couple of distinguished guests I want to introduce, and I know that they are very interested in the next topic. I have Mayor Cliff Turpin of the Town of Falcon, and Mayor Willie Burnett of the Town of Godwin, and we appreciate you guys being here. Just wave and say hello. Thanks. And this time, Ms. Cannon.
Yes, sir. Item number two, Mr. Chairman, is a presentation by Mr. Bruce McKay on the progress of the Atlantic Coast Pipeline.
It appears that Mr. McKay may not be here this evening.
Y'all read him off.
What did y'all do with Mr. McKay? Okay, well, I'm, I wouldn't, I didn't know him, so I didn't know that he wasn't here. My bad. But anyway, okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the approval of the agenda. Ms. Cannon?
No changes.
Okay, no changes to the agenda.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, in discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Next item, Ms. Cannon?
Item number four is a consent agenda.
Okay. Board members, what is your pleasure?
Approved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous. Item number five is our public hearings. We have uncontested zoning cases. The first case is case P sixteen dash zero three, Mr. Lloyd.
Mr. Chairman, these cases are all consent. The first one, sixteen, P sixteen dash oh three, is from A-one to R-twenty. That was done due to some of the property taken of the expansion, widening of Highway twenty-four. So the planable recommended unanimous approval.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Ms., of any speakers.
There are no speakers.
No speakers, I close the public hearing. Board, what is your pleasure? Have two motions.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the rezoning of one point three eight plus or minus acres from A-one agricultural to R-twenty residential are more restrictive. I'm sorry, I was reading the wrong thing. I'm sorry. I would like to move that we find the request for rezoning consistent with the two thousand growth vision plan and any other applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest of the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff.
Okay, that's case P sixteen dash oh three, or is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
No, no, no. Is there a second to the motion?
Yes, I'm second.
Okay. Okay. Moved and seconded, in discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, now.
Can we take the second one, Mr. Chairman? Ms. Lancaster?
Go ahead.
I would move to approve the rezoning for R-twenty residential district as recommended by the planning staff.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, in discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous. The next case is case P sixteen dash oh five.
Yes, sir. The planable recommended unanimous approval of this one. This was just to get all the property under the same ownership zone, the same.
Okay, this is case, case P sixteen dash oh five. What is your pleasure, Lord? I'm sorry. Open the public hearing.
There are no speakers.
No speakers, close the public hearing, now.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we follow the recommendations of the planning staff in rezoning case P sixteen oh five. Is that the one we're on?
That's it.
And it's consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan designated as the two thousand and thirty growth vision plan, which calls for a community growth area in this section as the proposed district would allow development of two point two units or less per acre. The request is not consistent with the vision northeast land plan, land use plan, which calls for farm land uses in this location. Staff also recommends, the board further find that the approval of this rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because approximately eighty percent of the subject property is currently zoned RR rural residential, and the district requested for the subject property meets or exceeds the location criteria of the district and the use policies plan. Use of septic allowed based in, on this soil type, lot size, and distance from public sewer, direct access is, to a public street is required. Cheryl Baggett and Bond of River Roads are public streets and must be located in any defined critical area as defined by the Fort Bragg Small Study Plan. That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. In discussion. All in favor? Okay, next motion.
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Next motion.
The second motion is, in addition to the above information, the planning inspection staff also recommends the board-approved case P sixteen oh five for RR rural residential district based on the following. The RR rural residential district will allow the land uses and lot sizes currently allowed in the majority of the tract, and the location and character of the requested district will be in harmony with the general area.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Okay, moved and seconded, all, discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous. The next item is a conditional zoning district, case P sixteen dash oh four.
Yes, this case was no opposition planable recommending unanimous approval, and it's the expansion between, or connection between two lots of the same commercial development.
Okay, open the public hearing.
There are no speakers.
No speakers, close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion for case P sixteen dash oh four?
Somebody else wants to do this one? Go ahead, Ms. Lancaster.
Go ahead, Larry.
Yes. The rezoning of six point six seven acres from R-six A residential to C-two P planned service and retail sees the conditional zoning for general office and trade contracted or to a more restrictive zoning district located at four sixty-two Brooklyn Circle. Service Road eleven twenty-six submitted by Patricia Rien, owner, and C. Gregory Bag.
Okay, go ahead and read the rest of the...
You need to read the motion.
Yes. And, and the motion will be moved to find the request for rezoning consistent with the two, twenty thirty growth plan and any applicable land use plan reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons stated in the recommendations of the planning staff included in the agenda package as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are to be fully incorporated herein by reference.
Okay, I'll second that one. In discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, second motion for P sixteen dash oh four.
Move to approve the request for C-two P planned service and retail sees the conditional zoning for general office and trade contracted as recommended by the planning staff included in the package agenda as reflected in the minutes of the planning board's consideration of this case, which minutes are fully incorporated herein by reference.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Item business, McCannon?
Yes, sir. Item number six is an update on the two thousand and fifteen sixteen strategic planning document. We're doing this just a little bit different, Mr. Chairman. We are providing a rather condensed version and hitting some of the key areas of the strategic plan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Back in May of two thousand and fifteen, you approved the two thousand and fifteen strategic plan, and you received an update in October. So tonight, we're just going to hit some highlights since the fall. Of course, the mission of Cumberland County Government is to provide quality services to our citizens while being fiscally responsible. And along those lines, the sales tax agreement has been extended for three years. The goal one is to ensure a safe and healthy community by providing needed services to our citizens in a timely manner. Since September, the Department of Public Health has received seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in grant funding. That breaks down into three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for the Environmental Health Division's Food and Lodging Section, three hundred thousand dollars for an adolescent parenting program, twenty thousand dollars from the North Carolina Division of Public Health Maternal and Child Health Section for a planning grant, sixteen thousand from the North Carolina Division of Public Health Oral Health Section, and then two thousand dollars for our Public Health Department's Dental Clinic's Smile for Kids program. And the Board of Health has been recognized as the outstanding Board of Health of the Year by the Association of North Carolina Boards of Health. Now, our library system has partnered with the Department of Public Health for a "Health Happens at Your Library" initiative, funding that through a state library grant. And between now and February twenty-eighth, one of those initiatives, if you can go drop by the library, you can pick up a log, a book, and get a free pedometer. And if you complete six of those activities, you'll be listed in a drawing to receive a Fitbit. That's one of those initiatives that they're partnering on. On March first, our animal control will start providing services on Fort Bragg. That's under the intergovernmental support agreement that you, the Commissioner, signed and the Garrison Commander has signed. Animal Control in two thousand and fifteen investigated twenty-eight cases of animal abuse or neglect. That resulted in criminal charges. So there were twenty-eight cases that resulted in charges. They've also received a five thousand dollar grant from the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals to purchase surveillance and safety equipment to help them end those cruelty investigations. In the area of community services, I'm sorry, emergency services, the feasibility study for co-location or consolidation of the city and county communication centers is nearing completion, and they'll be presented, that study will be presented to the City-County Liaison Committee at its next meeting. And since July two thousand and fifteen, the county's emergency call center has exceeded the ninety percent response standard of answering calls within ten seconds or less set by the National Fire Protection Association. The sheriff's office received grant funding for a ballistic identification equipment, and that's used to help them investigate and solve firearms crimes. You'll see a picture there. That is the new anti-DWI car. That has been very popular out in the community. They are receiving invitations to go on post to speak to groups of soldiers, from colleges to speak to the college students, and high schools to go out and speak. So that's going to be a very, very popular community program. They've also unveiled a detention prevention program with a mobile jail cell. They've also completed the Law Enforcement Center lobby renovation... They've also completed the law enforcement center lobby renovations to provide greater security, ease of access to information in the lobby, and also reception area, and they contracted for additional technology to aid in sex offender registration and tracking. Goal two, provide adequate infrastructure consistent with orderly growth of a dynamic county. At your meeting on February 4th, you received the Capitol Improvement Plan update. Additional office space has been created by the Engineering and Infrastructure Department for the DA's office, and at your last meeting, the commissioners approved a resolution in support of the Connect NC-Bond Project that's on the March 15th primary ballot, and you heard from Dr. King and Dr. Anderson about the 10.6 million that would go to FTCC, 10 million to FSU, and 5.7 million to Carvers Creek State Park. DSS worked with our county Engineering and Infrastructure Department to utilize unused space at the Spring Lake Family Resource Center. That will, has allowed DSS to expand the Child Protective Services and Foster Care Section and also provide Medicaid and food and nutrition assistance that will help prevent those customers in the Spring Lake area from having to come down to the Ramsey Street offices. Goal three is the goal to promote economic development by creating and retaining jobs and providing career opportunities, quality education, cultural, and recreational services. The county approved funding for the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation for the period of January 1, 2016, to June 30th, in accordance with the inter-local agreement with the city, and the county is acting as the fiscal organization for that, fiscal agent for that new organization. Our workforce development department is providing computers in our library system in those career centers at each library branch, and on March 23rd, the March to Work Job Fair will be held at the Crown Expo Center. Goal four, educate, inform, and engage employee citizens elected and appointed officials through effective and efficient communications. The county manager presented a sales tax distribution agreement presentation to various boards throughout the county to educate them on the current sales tax agreement. The Social Services Board hosted a joint meeting with the Chief District Court Judge to review court improvement efforts, and the Social Services Board wrote a letter in support to the state administrative office seeking an additional guardian ad litem attorney for the county, and this would help allow the DSS court to expand from one to two courtrooms. And from January through April, the library has been offering programs in an attempt to recruit more guardian ad litem volunteers. The sheriff's office launched a redesigned website in January, and they've also started a church security information and training services for churches. And our tax administration office has started outreach through going and giving presentations to seniors groups regarding payment plans and tax relief programs, and they've already filmed a video segment that will be appearing in March. They're gearing up for the revaluation as well and have a communications plan for that. And then the final goal is to employ motivated, professional, and well-trained personnel who offer excellent customer service with pride, and of course, pride stands for the county's core values: professionalism, respect, integrity, diversity, and excellent customer service. Under the wellness program, the county conducted its Employee Wellness Fair in October, and those employees who meet three of the four biometric measures will receive a $30 a month reduction in their insurance premiums if they're on the county plan. Now, Vont is our contractor who runs our clinic, and they've expanded the clinic hours now with the hiring of a full-time nurse practitioner. And in the area of staff development, we have a collaborative training initiative that we're partnering with the city of Fayetteville and Fort Bragg, and tomorrow and Wednesday, the city and the county and Fort Bragg will be on post to listen to Mark Weaver. He's a communications expert. Tomorrow, the session will focus on the senior management team from the city, the county's leadership team, and officials from Fort Bragg. On Wednesday, it'll be the public information, it will be very tailored to the specific public information staff from all of the public entities, including our community partners. And then, the commissioners also approved the overtime funding and time-limited positions at DSS. Our mailroom has moved from the courthouse to the print shop, and it's been combined into the print, mail, and design services. And our Enterprise Solutions Division's conducted the assessment at Veteran Services, and that report will be coming forward soon, and the Department of Social Services will be the next department that they will move to. And then you'll see a picture there on the slide. Several of our departments have won state awards, and that's a picture of Lisa Childers, our Cooperative Extension Director. She was recognized and received the Carol Burkhead Outstanding County Extension Director Award at the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Annual Conference. Cooperative Extension also was recognized by NCACC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, earlier for their work on Fort Bragg, and they received $1,000 as part of that award. Department of Social Services received four best practice awards this year from the state. Our Health Department has received numerous awards, public information, and the Register of Deeds, or some other departments that have been recognized. And that's, those are the highlights since this fall.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from Ms. Shaw?
I have one.
Good.
And I just, and just because, maybe I just wasn't listening, but I want to make sure on the animal control, there were more than 28 cases investigated, just 28 of them came, I just, because I don't want Dr. Lobby.
That's right.
Because I know Dr. Lobby's in staff is doing a lot of work out there. They investigated far more than that, it's just that 28 of them resulted in criminal charges.
Yes.
Okay.
And that is the wording from animal control.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, this time, item seven, there are no nominations for this meeting, but item eight A, our appointment of boards and committees, Mr. Vice Chairman Glenn Adams.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, there are an equal number of nominees for vacancies on the Board of Health. There's five vacancies, veterinarian, doctor, I put these glasses on, Heather Burkhardt for the dentist, Dr. Oliver Hodge for registered nurse, Sandra Council, and general public representative, Dr. Canelle McHorn and Dr. Vicki Andrews. I would move that we accept those by acclamation.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, in discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, item eight B, these Cape Fear Valley Boards and Trustees, there are multiple nominees for multiple positions. The first one is the registered nurse position. We have two nominees, and each commissioner gets one vote. So, at this time, I'd like to see a raise of hands for Murdis Worth.
Commissioners Keefe, Edge, Chairman Faircloth, Commissioner Lancaster.
Okay, and for, help me with this one, Afwa O, R-N?
R-N, it's just like the R-N.
R-N, okay, yes. How many for that?
We have Commissioners Adams and Evans.
Okay, I get four to two, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, so the appointee will be Murdis Worth. Okay, under the general public position, we have three nominees for two positions.
Mr. Chairman, I nominated Alicia Marks. I would withdraw her name from consideration.
Okay, Alicia Marks is withdrawn by the one who nominated her, so they're an equal number, and.
I would move that we accept those by acclamation.
Okay, been moved, been moved and seconded, accept those by acclamation. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, as to the Cumberland County Local Emergency Planning, there's one vacancy, and there's one nominee, the hospital representative, Ms. Marcia Lunt, L-U-N-T, for reappointment. I would move that she be accepted by acclamation.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded, in discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, we've got an equal number for the next.
At the Nursing Home Advisory Board, Mr. Chairman, there are three vacancies and three nominees, Mary Dillon, reappointment, Lataria Ray for reappointment, and Clarence Everett Senior for reappointment. I would be, I would move that they be accepted by acclamation.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, in discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, very good.
Item number nine, Mr. Chairman, is a closed session for economic development matter pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143 dash 318, 114A4.
Okay, what is your pleasure, Board?
Move that we go into closed session for economic development matter.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in fa, uh, excuse me, discussion, all in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, the Board will now go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, before we do, I'd like to recognize, we do have one of our members from the Library Board of Trustees, Ms. Tiffany, and I would like to make sure that we recognize her, the Library Board sends one to each of our meetings, so thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.